Good evening, welcome to the March meeting of the Niskuna zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Kenny, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Daly?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Here.
Chairperson Hope?
Here. First matter on the agenda this evening is the review of the February minutes of the zoning Board of Appeals. Has everybody reviewed a copy of those minutes? I had an opportunity to review a copy of those minutes. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Having heard your discussion, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion we approve.
A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion? Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Kenny, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes. Before we call the first matter on the agenda this evening, and I know there's two matters on the agenda, I want to disclose, we are a seven-person board. Tonight, we only have six members present, okay? And what that means is that you have to get four of six votes in order to have your variance approved. Because the odds are slightly different. Normally, we'd have a seventh person, which would increase the number of people hearing your case. You have the opportunity to ask for an adjournment to the next meeting, which would be our April meeting. There's no cost associated with doing that. At the beginning, before you start your presentation, your matter's called up, just let us know if you want to. I'll ask you if you want to adjourn to the next meeting. If not, and you start presenting your case, we're going to assume that you want to move forward this meeting, okay? So, Ms. Kenny, will you call the first matter on the calendar?
Appeal by Nadira Passard for variance from Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 821 Whitney Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to construct an addition partially within the side yard setback. I copied the wrong files. Section 220-13 Schedule IB requires a side yard setback of 20 feet. As proposed, the addition will be 12 feet from the side property line, therefore, an eight-foot side yard setback variance is required. 10 notices were mailed, zero responses.
Will the applicant please come forward, please? And can you state your name and address, just so we have it for the record, please?
Sure. Nadira Passard, 821 Whitney Drive, Niskuna, New York, 12309.
Laura, before we get going, could you pull this up on the satellite image of this property? Just so we have something to reference. I didn't see any. I saw the drawings in your application. I didn't see actually pictures of the property. Not that you had to submit pictures, but... Okay, and that is your house, correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. And so, with respect to that, you're seeking to put an addition on the property, correct?
That is correct.
And is that addition going on the right side of the house or the left side of the house?
It's going on the left side of the house.
Okay, that's what I thought. And, okay, so why don't you describe for us why you need this addition?
So, the addition is to improve our family life. The home footprint is on the smaller side. Our second bedroom is a nine-by-nine room. As you can imagine, it's not really inevitable for an adult to be in there. It's more of a child room right now. So, we were planning on putting on an addition, which would create more space in that back room for us and also reposition our other rooms in the home. So, with the addition, we would gain two, an eight-by-28 addition would enable us to gain a bathroom and opening up the space for that bedroom.
Okay. And can you explain why you couldn't go backwards out the back of the house as opposed to over the side of the house?
There is a pool in the backyard of the home, so we would be infringing on that and probably still run up to a variance issue going out the back of the home.
Okay. And with respect to your neighbors, have you discussed the addition that you're putting on with the neighbor that's most closely impacted to the left of your house, looking at your house from Whitney Drive?
I have, and I have a letter of support signed by the neighbor.
Okay, why don't we put that in? We're going to take that and make that a part of the record, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Could you give that to Ms. Kenny? Yes, could you read that into the record, please?
March 15, 2025, Zoning Board of Appeals. Dear members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I am writing to express my support for the variance request from Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 821 Whitney Drive, Niskuna, New York, 12309, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district. The variance is sought to allow the construction of an addition partially within the side yard setback. As the homeowners of 817 Whitney Drive, the property adjacent to the planned addition, we discussed the proposed addition with the homeowners and reviewed the plans. Based on our conversation, the addition is intended to improve the home's functionality, providing additional living space for the family. The design of the addition is being planned to ensure it is seamlessly incorporated into the existing structure and does not eclipse ours. By granting this variance, we do not feel that this addition will harm the nearby properties or negatively affect our neighborhood. The homeowners of 821 Whitney Drive have demonstrated a commitment to improving their property. I respectfully urge the Zoning Board of Appeals to approve the variance request for 821 Whitney Drive. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Emily Furman, homeowner of 817 Whitney Drive.
Ms. Passard, just one question that I should have asked you at the outset, and I forgot. I just created, I told you I was going to ask, and then I never asked.
Oh.
Do you wish to move forward with the six-person board this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. That being said, I'm going to ask if any other members of the board have questions for you, okay?
Sure.
Yeah, Ms. Passard, quick question. When I was looking at that picture, there's a fence.
Yes.
And when you add the addition, is that going to be, the fence is going to remain there?
Yes, that is the fence for my property.
And how far, how far is that fence from your addition would be after you?
So, that fence right now is 17 out of the 20.
Okay.
And so, we are still in line with the addition. So, basically, if you can see, there's a gate there. The addition would just be maybe a foot more over that gate.
So, you still have?
I'm still within the fence, and there will still be area there.
And is that a four-feet fence there?
I believe so. That was there before we moved in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Ms. Passard. How are you?
Good evening.
Just, what's the existing drainage system on the house? Do you have, is there a gutter system?
Yes, there is. I actually replaced them about two years ago. We had the roof done, and the gutters were...
Okay. And will that extend to the proposed addition?
Yes, of course.
Okay. And where would that drainage, where would that downspout be?
Right now, there is one downspout in the front of the home, so it will remain in the front of the home.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
And then, there is one in the backyard, so that would drain towards our pool area.
And the front side drains towards the?
Correct, it's towards the front of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Pacheco has her hand raised?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Passard.
Good evening.
And I know, now I'm up on the big screen, so I can't see the plans anymore. But in line with my colleague's question about drainage in the back, has there been an issue towards the side of the neighbor most impacted where it looks, the fence has gotten a little taller, and there's a tree there? Are there any drainage issues there?
No.
Okay. And what we see in that image with the large, it looks like a pine tree of some sort, is that also on your property?
Yes.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Having heard no other questions, does anybody wish to make a motion relative to this application?
Actually, before we get there, I know that most likely, these other two are the other applicants, but if we can make sure that...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no members of the public that wish to be heard for or against the application, now, is there anyone who wishes to make a motion relative to this application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance. Looks like the applicant is, showed us the needs of expanding the room in there. We also got a letter from the neighbor, a positive letter that's supporting the expanding. And it's not going to cause any undesirable change to the neighborhood. It looks like it's going to be matching with the house, and there's a fence in there that's going to be still around the expanding. Is the request substantial? It's a little substantial, but again, it looks like it's going to fit properly with the house, and it meets the needs of the family. Is it going to cause any adverse physical environment? Again, the applicant showed us they can have drainage in the back, drainage in the front, and it's not going to cause any problem in this case. For all these reasons, Mr. Chairman, I approve it.
A motion's been made. Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that for all the reasons stated.
A motion's been ma-
I was concerned about the drainage, but you clarified it. And I'm going to make the motion.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Having heard no discussion, Ms. Kenny, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Daly?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Stein?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Also, I appreciate you, in the application, you put that you're trying to make this forever home. I do understand some of the houses in Niskuna are a little small, in the small size, so, but, yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, for the reasons stated. Your variance application's been granted.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Take care. Ms. Kenny, will you call the next matter, please?
Appeal by Danielle and Garrett Rockwell for variance from Section 220-25A4 and Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 2113 Orchard Park Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district to maintain a fence which exceeds the height limit in the side yard. Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet as requested by permit renewal application and constructed. A six-foot-high fence is located in the side yard along Orchard Park Drive. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required.
Will the applicant please come forward, please? Can you state your names and address for the record?
Danielle Rockwell.
And Garrett Rockwell. It's 2113 Orchard Park Drive, Niskuna, New York.
Okay, so you heard my spiel. Do you guys want to move forward, or do you want to adjourn to get the extra member for the next meeting?
We'll move forward.
Okay. Mr. and Mrs. Rockwell, I guess the first question here is, we're here on a, you were noticed for a violation of your fence, correct?
Correct.
And I see, Mr. Rockwell, that you submitted an application on August 11 of 2023, correct?
Correct, yes.
And at the time you submitted the application, you submitted a drawing as to where the fence was going to be located?
Yes.
The subject issue, the fence that's at issue, which is that small area right there?
Yes.
Okay, and right there, I'm referencing the section that is not off the back corner of your property, but is up from it?
Correct.
Several feet. On the sketch that you submitted and was approved, it was at the back corner of your property?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
And, you know, you had the, you weren't required to, but you had the application notarized, and you indicated you understood the requirements of the zoning code at the time you submitted it. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, tell me what went wrong?
The day of install, the fence company said that coming off the back corner of the property with the current fence that we had ordered would...
Sir, could you talk?
Yep. The day of install, the fence, the six-foot-tall fence coming off the back corner of our property, adjoining our neighbor's fence, he would have had to dig closely to one of their posts. He was concerned with digging near one of their fence posts, the neighbor's fence post, either by affecting the structural integrity of their fence, by making it move, by digging next to it, or if their fence post was concreted in, there would have been no way to install our current fence post. Also, on the back corner of that property, there is a downspout coming off, and he was just worried that maybe some of the water from the downspout may wash the current post. So, by moving a few feet forward, he was trying to solve that solution.
It seems about like, what would you say, about how many feet?
Like, somewhere between four to five feet.
Okay.
You can see the downspout right there.
And so, you did disclose this to the town, though, that you were doing this. They came back to inspect it when it was built, and that's when you were noticed, or?
Correct, yes. After the fence was installed, I called for an inspection and was given a notice.
Okay, I'm going to ask if anybody else on the board has questions?
What, you just said there was no conceivable way that you could have put it anywhere but there. Am I correct in hearing that?
Yeah, yes.
Behind our neighbor's fence, so, does that make sense? Behind their posts, and they didn't want to, we can't go in front, we couldn't have gone in front of it. It's behind their house as well, but they didn't want to... Oh, sorry. It, our fence that, when it was installed, it is behind our neighbor's fence. I don't know if that is an issue. So, they didn't want to go right where the downspout is. I don't know, that other picture showed that better.
Okay.
And our neighbor's post, they have a few posts right there, so he didn't want to go right next to it because of that. I don't know if you can see our neighbor's fence.
I, we do have the photograph, so I can, I can see where the neighbor's fence is. I see where the downspout is. I I'm not sure that those issues couldn't have been remediated. You know, the downspout could have been moved, or you could have...
The grade of the property in the back slopes towards the house, so if we had moved the spout where it's off that corner now to the back of the house, the water typically drains back towards our house.
Okay, so, okay, that makes sense to me.
That, that was one of the reasons why moving the downspout to that position would have helped.
Okay. The concern I have, and I'm only speaking for myself, is that when we get these applications and they they say that, you know, the fence is going to be in one location, and it turns out that it's in a different location, that's, that's, and I know you don't come before the Zoning Board of Appeals, but that's something that repeats itself over and over again, that we've seen cases like that. So, it's, you know, the proper procedure would have been to apply for the variance at that point in time before the fence was built. I get concerned when, you know, now the facts on the ground have changed, and you're coming here and saying, you know, it's up, and it's going to cost money to move, and, you know, we don't want to do that. So, that's my concern, because one of the issues we have to consider is this is a self-created hardship. And in most times, every zoning application is a self-created hardship, but in this type of situation, that's amplified as a factor to consider. So, the fact that you were aware of the code, and you were also aware that you weren't going to be able to comply with the code, it seems like that's something that should have been brought before the board prior to this point in time. But I'm only speaking for myself. There's multiple people on the board that, you know, have different views and opinions on this. Is there anyone else on the board that has questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So, when the company who put your fence in there?
Yep.
Their recommendation was to put it where you put it?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Now, did you consider putting a four-feet fence in there? And because then you don't need, you won't have that issue if you put a four-feet fence.
Yes, I understand that now, but no, I, at the day of install, I did not think of something like that.
Okay. And I know your neighbor, do they have a four-feet or six-feet?
The neighbor's fence is six-foot as well.
And that's to the back of their house?
That is correct.
And yours is about, how many, I know you said it, how many feet is it in?
Roughly four to five feet.
Four to five feet, and I see you have a door in there, is that correct, in there, that goes to the backyard?
That is a gate, yes, yes.
Okay, a gate. And do you have any access from the back of the house to, do you have a door on the side or anything?
We have a sliding back door in our backyard.
In the backyard?
Correct.
So, what would it take to make, you want to keep that fence in there, what would it take to make it into a four-feet fence? What would be the issue for you if it was to be four-feet fence?
That would be a financial hardship on us.
We're a young family with two young children, so, pretend, yes, it would cost extra money that we currently don't have.
Okay. And one more question. Is the back of your house even with the back of your neighbor's house?
I'm not, I'm not understanding the question.
Is the house in the back of your house and your neighbor, are they on the same level?
No, because we're a corner lot.
You're a corner lot?
Correct.
So, so that doesn't make any... Okay, which, which one is your neighbor's?
The fence on the, the fence on the right is a neighbor.
Right. And we have, we have spoken to our neighbors. We went to a few neighbors, and they didn't have an issue with the current location.
Okay, so you have talked to the neighbors, and nobody complained. The problem is when, like Mr. Hope said, when we have people build the fence, they apply for something, we tell them it's in the back, and then they come back. We set precedent for other people to, anybody's going to say, get the permit, and then, here, put it in the front, you know? But I understand you had a reason, the builder kind of couldn't put it where you applied for it. And did you ask our town that that's going to happen, or do you just put it in there?
It was just, yeah, we did not ask at the time. It was, I believe it was installed on a Saturday, and it just wasn't something that crossed our mind at the time.
And Laura, is this came to one of Tom or somebody's attention? How did that?
Yeah, it's, final inspection failed.
It failed because they wanted it in the back, and they built it five feet in?
Yeah, I mean, we do allow some tolerance, like six inches or so for downspouts and things, but when it's this many feet, it's automatic fail.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, again, what, you know, what Laura just indicated was that you could have accommodated a downspout, and that would have not resulted in a failure. They would have taken that into consideration. I just have one last question. When the, when the builder was, the installer was installing the fence, did he tell you that it was going to be in violation of the code? Were you aware at that point in time that you were going to be violating the code by putting it where it was?
I was not aware by the builder, no.
Were you aware yourself, though?
No, I was not.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So, I also have a question about the back corner of the house relative to what's on that corner. I can see the downspout in pictures. Is there anything else along that wall, like a door or a gas meter, any kind of equipment or appliances that are mounted on the ground or that you need to use for the house that would have prevented putting the fence there?
Yes, along that back wall of the house, we have the electrical box that comes into the house. We have a central air unit under the back of the house there. The radon is exited there. Our vent for the furnace is vented there, and there is a ductless split, ductless split as well on that wall.
Yeah, and you're talking about... Okay, so I see this is a picture inside your yard?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so what we currently see on the screen is that we see the downspout, but there's no equipment between that downspout and the fence. So, you're saying there's equipment there now?
Oh, no, I thought you meant on the back where you see the electrical meter. I thought you meant that wall there.
No, I meant the left side of that corner.
No, no, there is not.
Okay, so there was an opportunity to have it closer to the corner of your house, and perhaps, we can't tell, have it not right next to the post of your neighbor's fence. Would that be fair to say?
Our neighbor has a few posts, I don't know if we have a picture of that, on the other side, where they have several posts. So, that was the concern, that it was going to be right up against their posts. If that makes sense.
I'm unaware how far the fence company wanted to be from the neighbor's fence where they felt safe it was to dig.
And they didn't know if it was cemented, is what. There was also cement in there.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have just a couple of questions. I did see on the front side of the, I wanted to ask you a question. How far is it to their front post to your front post? Does that make sense? And you said it's about four or five feet that you guys kind of came forward, but how far is it to the next, the front post of their corner? Would you estimate?
I would say probably four feet, because I think the panel was, like, probably split in half.
So, you, yeah, so you believe they split it in half to stay away from both the posts?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I never, I didn't measure in that current top photo. I did not measure the right-hand side.
I understand you didn't measure. I'm, yeah, I'm just asking your estimation, because you know it best. And what is your fence made out of?
I believe it's PVC or vinyl.
Okay. And what is their, the neighbor's fence made out of?
I believe the same.
Okay. So, their fence is PVC as well?
Yes.
Got it, all right. Did your, the builder explore attaching your fence to theirs?
I'm not, I don't, I don't know that answer.
That's okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
They can't. Fences have to be freestanding on their own property. Unless they have a fence agreement.
Okay, thank you. That answers that.
Are there any other members of the board that have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. You didn't you didn't fully understand what the contractor was saying when he did this or did that, did you? Is that what you said before? I mean, when he said the post was this and frame was this and whatever he said to you, did you fully understand him? I mean, are you in construction or?
No, I'm a barber, so I know nothing about constructions of fences.
So, you took his word for it, am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Are there any other members of the board that have any questions? Having heard no other members of the board, are there any members of the public that wish to be heard for or against this application? Having heard no members of the public, this is the time when we will consider your application. I will start this off by making a motion to approve your application. Let me tell you my thought process. You know, this is, this application is one of the most vexing type of applications that come before us because of the situation that I've explained to you. There are, we have to go through an analysis of various factors to determine, and you went through those factors when you filled out your application to determine whether to approve or deny the variance, and we have to weigh those. And everybody weighs them a little differently in their mind. Typically, the final factor is whether this is a self-created hardship, and as I indicated to you, that factor is not something that we typically heavily weigh, okay? Because every variance application, to a certain extent, is a self-created hardship, okay? You didn't need to get the variance. You could always choose not to apply for whatever you're, you know, whatever you're seeking, usually. In your particular circumstance, because we have the fence up, because there was an application that was submitted that specifically said the fence was going to be in a different location than it actually was, and then you subsequently, you know, put up the fence at the, you know, in a different location, it's 100% self-created. It's a hundred percent self-created and that factor is weighed very heavily in my mind, okay? So, um, but there's four other factors that we have to take into consideration. Um, and let me just say with respect to, and I appreciate that what you said, it would create a financial hardship to remove the fence, and I appreciate that that's a hundred percent true, okay? But that in and of itself would not move me to approve your application, okay? And I want to say that because I'm very cognizant of what Mr. Latif said in terms of, you know, the, you know, the precedent that, you know, we don't want to set any precedent, where I'm looking at this as a unique application. When I apply the other, uh, you know, the other variables that we have to consider, whether the benefit can be achieved by other feasible means. Yes, it can be. You could move the fence. Um, you could move it and, you know, Laura indicated that the town said that there's a six foot or six inch, uh, grace between the, the back, uh, corner of your property and where the downspout is to accommodate that, okay? So that wouldn't, in and of itself also is not a factor that, you know, supports your application. When we will look at whether, and this is an important one in my thought process, whether the granting of this variance will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Well, no, I don't think so. Um, in addition to the fact that, you know, we're talking about this white vinyl fence, your neighbor already has a white vinyl fence. That white vinyl fence is farther forward than when your vinyl white fence is. Um, I don't believe that the applicant attempted to, uh, place the fence. You know, in other words, I believe that the justification as to why the fence was placed there um, was legitimately what you were thinking. You weren't trying to achieve any kind of benefit. There wasn't a door or some other kind of access point that you were trying to accomplish. I believe that the applicant was relying upon the advice of, um, the contractor um, when they, when they put it at that particular location. So I don't, I don't believe that there's going to be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood based upon where the, the fence is located. Um, I don't believe that the, the, the variance is substantial, given that we're talking about four feet. And also when I'm contemplating, um, how substantial it is, in my mind, I'm also taking into consideration, you know, that the, the applicant isn't really deriving any substantial benefit from putting the, uh, fence where it is versus the back corner of the property. Um, will there be any physical or environmental effects in the neighborhood? No, I don't believe that there would be, um, any detrimental advi- adverse physical or environmental effects based upon the fact that, um, again, there's, there's, there's already going to be a fence around the property. The neighbor has a fence. I don't think this changes anything. I think that moving the fence to the back corner arguably could potentially impact, uh, the, that downspout and the water flow away from the property, which, um, at this point in time, uh, nobody's indicated uh, is an issue in terms of, uh, the, the drainage. Certainly wouldn't want to create a situation where drainage did become a, a, an issue. So for all of those reasons, um, and, you know, this is a very difficult decision for me. Um, I, I move that we approve your variance. A motion's been made. Is there a second?
We'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Kenny, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes on the motion, but again, uh, just want to make sure to, you know, the only reason I'm voting yes because the contractor found that's the best way to do it, and from what you said to us today, uh, you didn't have an idea that that's what's gonna happen or what's the reason. So for all the reasons Mr. Hope stated, and what I'm saying, I'm voting yes.
Ms. Pacheco?
I'm going to vote no, uh, and my following reasons are about the positioning of that fence, uh, by the contractor and the uh, installing something different from what was planned and applied for. And then asking forgiveness later, I'm concerned about creating a precedence where people, uh, who apply in similar circumstances will say, well, I didn't know this or I didn't know that and the contractor told me this and I'm just going to ask for forgiveness. So I, I'm very concerned about that. Um, while it does create a hardship, I understand, to have to move it, I think it can be uh, appropriately installed closer to the corner where it was originally intended to be. So for those reasons, I vote no.
Mr. Daly?
I vote yes.
Mr. Stein? Mr. Stein?
I'm gonna vote yes for the reasons stated, and, um, I want to add that it, it makes sense that, hey, the fence has to be freestanding. The posts can't be right next to each other. I understand the diggers' thoughts on that. I also think that, uh, the rules, uh, have logic to them, but sometimes the logic doesn't work. This is a case where that logic doesn't work and we need to apply the exception to the rule, uh, so I'm voting yes.
Mr. Antonikowski?
I'm gonna vote yes as well. Uh, I, I respect my, uh, colleagues' opinions on the, um, and also agree with the that it was planned one way and executed another. And, you know, the expectation is that when you submit a plan, it gets completed the way it was designed. Um, however, I am swayed by, uh, the contractor's um, concerns around the structural integrity of the fence and the placement near the drain. I do think it could have been placed closer to the rear of the house, but, um, for the reasons stated by my colleagues, I'm, I'm, I'm a yes. I'll approve though.
Chairperson Hope?
Yes, uh, your, your, uh, variance has been approved.
Thank you.
Take care. Good luck.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there any discussion tonight? No discussion?
Yeah. I got something to say. You know, we, we come into this, we come into this problem. The contractor, the, the average homeowner doesn't know anything in, in construction. That's the average I'm saying. This, this gentleman here, he had no concept. Well, the contractor said it's good. He's done it before. It's, uh, I guess it's, it's good by me. And I don't, I don't know what we can do as, uh, as the town to send a letter out, you know, saying if there's a change, we must notify the town.
Well, well, you know, along that lines, and, uh, Elena, I don't know what your thoughts are on this, but in terms of the building application, i- it, it allows for either the applicant or the contractor to sign it. Um, it appears that it's signing under penalties of, uh, it doesn't say under penalties of perjury, but, um, maybe the application can be could, could require that and it could require the applicant, uh, the contractor to sign uh, with the same language that is, in this case, the, the contractor has the opportunity to sign it, but also the homeowner has an opportunity to sign it. If in fact the contractor is going to be doing the work, it would seem to make sense to have the contractor attest that they in fact understood what the requirements of the code were and, and, and attested to the fact that they were constructing whatever in compliance with the code.
And perhaps we can, I don't know if there's room or if we can move things around, but maybe we can even just put a disclaimer on there that, you know, failure to comply, comply with the plans that's submitted may result in a, um, failed inspection.
Yeah, we're actually redoing our forms right now. So, I mean, we could look at trying to make it stronger. We noted that if you don't comply with what is permitted. I mean, it does say it. It says it in multiple places, but, you know, there's a lot of words on a page. Like, we're talking about putting a checklist on the front, so maybe at the bottom of the checklist.
Maybe something that they initial separately too.
Yeah, it's, I mean, this, this application says that they understand it, but it doesn't say what the consequence of, maybe the con- putting a consequence on here, you know, would, would have an impact. Maybe not. I don't know, but.
Well, especially, who's gonna pay if they come back and, and move it back? Let's say if that fence was to be moved to the back, who's gonna pay for that?
That will always be civil.
Right.
Yeah, so it would just depend on the contractor, contract they had with their person. And town wouldn't ever get involved in that, sadly. Katrina, did you have something?
Yes, I'd just like to add that, um, if you're redoing the forms, is there a way to include the diagram of what's a backyard and it's a side yard?
That's actually already included in the fence permit and they're supposed to circle which part of their home, um, which diagram their home most clearly represents to understand their side, front and rear yards. But we can, you know, keep working on it to make it clear. It is an issue that does come up for this board fairly regularly. And I agree with the frustration of, oops, I didn't build it quite right.
Maybe put their initials on that page. I do see a signature page on that.
You are supposed to sign that page.
Maybe you want to put a disclaimer on that page.
Yeah.
I was particularly concerned in this and you heard my vote. Uh, it's that, it was built not according to plan and it was noticed immediately, you know, when, when the homeowner asked for the inspection, it failed. So at that point, you know, and this is a year and a half ago, uh, roughly, it's taken them this long to come before us. I, I was just concerned, you know? And I don't know if there's any time constraints related to permits uh, and, uh, any notices of, of failure. So I don't know if anything more can be said on the, on the funds for that.
Yeah, we can definitely look at the forms to see if we can prevent more of this, you know, with stronger language. Um, they do have to pay for a renewal. They weren't able to comply with the code, so they couldn't extend their permit. But by this granting of the variance, they have to pay for a renewal before they can close their permit.
I think the, I think, uh, Ms. Pacheco's question was with respect to if this was built in October of 2023, why it's coming before the board now in 2025.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, the notices have a certain date for compliance. Um, but we put a fair amount of notices out and sometimes it's not caught until the renewal date, which was the case of this one. So although the inspection was failed, a lot of times an inspection does fail. It's noted and then the property calls for reinspection. We don't typically call out for reinspection. What a failed inspection means is that you didn't pass, so bring this fence to four feet or bring it to the rear corner of the house and then call us again. We didn't actually realize that they weren't complying with the failed inspection until the permit went for renewal. That's why that timeline is like that.
So perhaps, uh, if something can be added to the timeline of the failure, uh, notice. I don't know if we're able to.
We can think about it, but inspections fail semi-regularly. Um, the building inspector will go out and, you know, they won't have the, the hand, the door handles on the right direction or the stairs don't have, um, guardrails yet or something like that.
I think, I think the question, if I understand Ms. Pacheco correctly, is can we expedite that timeline so we don't have a failure and an existing non-compliance continue for a long period of time before it, there's a requirement that it be addressed?
Yeah, we can look at it. Our software, we'd have to figure something out because I'm saying we fail things regularly. So if we're then putting a timeline on failing, you know, for reinspection, we'd have to figure how that would work out in our office, but we could look at it.
Like, in other words, do they have to have a certain time, time limit to comply? Or do you just wait till the permit expires before you go and check on it? Like, if nobody ever gets back to you, then you just wait till the expiration of the permit?
Yeah, because, because typically, and we're just talking about building department process now, but typically if you fail, you're very motivated to call us again and then have it fixed because you're going to want a lot of times, you know, is it like, you know, for New York, you're gonna want the certificate of occupancy. You're gonna want to close out that contract with your contractor. So we, we aren't the ones that follow up on a failed inspection because we will typically get a call within a day or two. I fix it, come back out and look. Um, so that's why I'm saying in our system, it would be, it would be an interesting thing. We can certainly look at it, but we don't put a timeline or track failed inspections because typically they're followed up on the onus is on the owner and they have the incentive to follow up with us.
Right, and like you're saying, Laura, usually it's for an entire building where they're looking for a certificate, certificate of occupancy, uh, which is much more urgent than a fence correction. I think the nature of the cases that come in front of this board are such that it's not usually a critical time element. Uh, although sometimes we have to deal with, let's say, uh, RVs in the front yard uh, that are there in the winter. I think that was last month, the month before. Um, so I think having an increased awareness and a timeline on if there is a failure for those items that have come under the zoning, uh, regulations to be addressed would be appreciated.
Yeah, and there has to be a way to do it because actually if, if you fail a pool inspection and there's a safety issue, there is a timer and attached to it. But fences aren't a health, safety, life thing.
The, the, the other factor to consider is if the applicant has prompter or, or prompt notice that they have to remediate it, like there's, that, the, the timeline's gonna be compressed so they have an opportunity to talk to the contractor who just installed it more recently as opposed to a year and a half earlier and say, you know, you gotta get back here and fix this.
Yeah, move, move it afoot. Thank you, but it didn't work.
Year and a half later, you know, the guy's using, uh, he's a Tahiti.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we can look at that. Like, we are redoing the forums and we could look at that. Yeah.
You guys don't have to stay if you don't want to.
You enjoying the internal deliberations for the sounding board?
Just trying to make the process better.
Yeah.
Thank you for your honesty.
What, what board do you sit on? Oh, okay.
Well, we need zoning board members.
All right, is there anything else this evening? Uh, having, uh, heard nothing else, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.